Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call roll.
Counselor Vaughn Cooperrow, absent, Counselor Tenere Garcia.
President.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Counselor Linaida.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vido.
President.
Counselor De Jesus.
President.
Counselor Judy Garcia. Nine members present.
We will move on to the memoriam and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Avellaneda recognizing Latino Heritage Month, brought on by, also introduced by all members of the City Council. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, the Chelsea City Council recognizes the contributions made and the important presence of Latino Americans in Chelsea, Massachusetts, and the United States as a whole, and celebrates their heritage and culture. Latinos have had a profound and positive influence in our community and our country through their music, literature, food, strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service to country. They have enhanced and shaped our local and national character with century-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. The Hispanic and Latino community grew from fifty million, sixty percent of the U.S. population in 2010, to sixty-two point one million, eighteen percent in 2020. And the data shows that Latino Americans start more businesses per capita than any other racial, ethnic group in the United States. And while Latino-owned employee businesses are concentrated in cities and states with large, dense Latino populations such as Los Angeles, Miami, and New York, forty-five of the fifty states are an increase in Latino-owned businesses from 2012 to 2021. Of the twelve point two million business owners in the United States, there are an estimated six hundred thousand U.S.-born Latino businesses owners and roughly one point two million immigrant Latino business owners making up fifteen percent of businesses' ownership, supporting millions of employees nationwide, and contributing more than seven hundred trillion in revenue to the economy of the United States. Latinos were mobilized and killed in action for military service in World War I, World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, both Iraq Wars, the Afghan War, and many conflicts around the world in service to the United States. Latino Americans are dedicated public servants, holding posts at the highest levels of government of the United States. Therefore, let it be that the Chelsea City Council hereby supports September fifteenth through October fifteenth of 2022 as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages participation in this special annual tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Latino Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. What is the wish of the council?
Suspension of there are no objections.
Counselor Vido asks that this be adopted under suspension. If there's no objections, are there any comments? Counselor Robinson, you raising hand?
It's not in regard to the resolution, I just wanted to also, tonight was the beginning of Rosh Hashanah, and just wanted to recognize the Walnut Street Show and Temple Emmanuel and wish them all a Happy New Year.
Counselor Brown, then Counselor De Jesus.
Mr. President, I just want to congratulate the month of October as we get ready to celebrate this festive month for the Hispanic community. As it states in the resolution, it's just a great opportunity that every month we get a chance to celebrate the accomplishments and also the fabric of how the United States of America has been brought together on the backs, on the work, on the dignity, and the support. So I'm excited about, you know, some of the festivities that's going to happen. I know some of my colleagues was at the breakfast last Friday where they had a big, an event, Hispanic Heritage Celebration that they have annually. But I'm just excited and I'm just grateful to be in a community where we invoke, and not only invoke, but we embrace all the accomplishments of every race that we have in our community. And it's great to stand up each and every year and make it publicly known that I support and I respect the work that's been done before us for these people and for the families and the generations before us. Thank you.
Counselor De Jesus.
I just wanted to briefly state, you know, el orgullo que siento como latina al celebrar este mes, you know, how proud I am as a Latina on the council to celebrate this month alongside my coworkers and fellow sisters and brothers, counselors who are also Latinos, Latinas. You know, Chelsea siempre ha sido un lugar de mucha cultura. Chelsea has always been rich with culture, and I think that's why our community has always been such a special place to the Latino community and to immigrants in general. From wherever you are traveling from, Chelsea has always opened up their arms and made you feel like you're at home. And so I'm grateful for all the work of previous counselors, I'm grateful for all the work of this body that we have here today, and I'm grateful for the community that raised me, that made this small town of Massachusetts feel like the little island of Puerto Rico that raised my parents. And so celebremos la cultura latina y este mes fabuloso. Let's all celebrate this beautiful month of Hispanic heritage.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have public speaking. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the City Council, you'll have four minutes, please state your name and your address.
Hello, good evening, buenas noches. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Maria Evelyn Power, and I live at thirteen Admiral's Way. I'm also the Associate Executive Director of Green Roots, an environmental justice organization, and I'm here to speak about the bus lane and just in support of keeping the bus lane permanent. We have piloted a bus lane on Broadway, and so far the data has shown that it really has had really positive impacts. The more we prioritize public transit, the more we reduce emissions and improve our air quality and public health. And also, you know, it's not an opinion or sort of subjective, but it really is, we have seen the data of reduced crashes, and pedestrian and vehicular crashes, over sixty percent reduction. And so that's a really big deal for the safety of our community. And I think that, yeah, that does mean that traffic has slowed down, and that does mean that there is a little bit more traffic on Broadway. But what that also means is that buses that are going on Broadway are prioritized the same way that cars are. And so it's not about getting rid of cars, it's not about anti-people who drive cars. I have a car, I drop on Broadway. But the reality is that people who drive cars have an option to take a different route, and that people who are on buses really don't. They're stuck on the buses when there's traffic. So I just encourage you to vote in support of keeping the bus lane permanent, and it really is prioritizing buses across the region for the entire MBTA. The one-eleven is one of the most overcrowded buses in the entire line, not just within the bus system, but within the trains also. So that really speaks to the high need of bus prioritization in Chelsea. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of September twelfth. Do we have a motion to adopt? Counselor Brown asks that we accept and file the minutes of the meeting from the last, from September twelfth, under suspension, seeing none, that is accepted and filed. We now have communications from the city manager, communication received from the city manager, Amber Zino, regarding the requested approval for an increase in the school department budget FY twenty-three. As you may recall, the FY twenty-three budget approved by the City Council in June included a school department budget of one hundred eighteen million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars. The budget was based on the original budget number submitted by the governor at the start of FY twenty-three. Not surprisingly, as in the case of most years, the final state budget approved by the legislature and signed by the governor included some changes to school funding. And in the case of the Chelsea school system, there were changes in the...
Yes?
On the new business, on the suspension of there are no objections?
Seeing no objection, we're waiving the reading, moving on to the next communication. We have communication received from the city manager regarding the ordinance amendments to streamline event permitting. Dear counselors, I'm writing to request that City Council consider some amendments to our existing ordinances in order to streamline the permitting of special permits throughout the city. This past spring, our civic design and engagement strategist, strategist rather, Mimi Graney, Security Grant from Mass Development helped us review our existing ordinances and improve permitting for events in the city. Right now, even for small events, there are numerous departments to which an applicant must confer before finalizing a permit, making the process quite onerous. With these proposed changes, we hope to streamline this process. The significant substantive changes appear in the attached document as Amendment fourteen. Specifically, that ordinance amendment provides that for smaller events of a short duration that have no more than five performers and require no electricity, agents of the License Commission may grant permission via a simple application form. For larger, special events, the new ordinance grants License Commission to the ability to issue one comprehensive permit. The proposed attachment also includes a handful of other amendments that mostly make minor technical changes to bring our existing regulations in line with state laws and allow for the waiver of bonds and issuance for smaller events. I ask for the City Council to approve these changes. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Robinson asks that we accept and file the communication of the suspension, seeing no objection. We'll move on to the next communication received from the city manager regarding appropriations from the General Stabilization Fund. Dear counselors, I'm writing to request funding for several projects that need attention this fall. Because free cash will likely not be certified until midwinter, the source of funding for each of these requests is in our, is our General Stabilization Fund. We have the Milcreet Illicit Discharge Detection Elimination Plan, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred. We have the Innis Project Environment Oversight, ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And we have the Youth Athletic League Support, fifty thousand dollars. What is the wish of the council?
Something's coming up, we'll vote, we'll move to second reading later.
Counselor Brown asks that we waive the reading and accept and file under suspension, so moved. We have a communication from the city manager regarding appointments to the Chelsea Tree Board and request for a conflict of interest law exemption. Dear counselors, pursuant to four-two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend that the appointment to the Chelsea Tree Board, Ms. Bianca Mercado of Thirty Fennel Street, Chelsea, fulfill the unexpired term of Denise Ortega, who has resigned. This term expires on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Because Ms. Mercado is currently enjoyed, employed by, part-time by the City of Chelsea as a sustainability fellow of the North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability, the city solicitor has determined that she needs an exemption by vote of the City Council from the statutory conflict of interest laws in order to accept this role. I ask the City Council also approve this exemption. All of Ms. Mercado's duties for the Tree Board will be outside of her normal working hours as a city employee. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, something will be coming up on the new business.
Counselor Robinson asks that we accept and file under suspension, seeing no objection. We'll move on to the next communication, which is the city manager requesting for a conflict of interest exemption for Chelsea Public School softball coach. Dear counselors, pursuant to four-three-one of the Chelsea City Charter, I'm writing to request City Council approval of cost of items for the new collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the Teamsters Local. Apologize, I think I packaged the two together. Let's get back, going back to softball coach. Chelsea Public School wishes to hire a current DBW Central Building employee, Ms. Emily Arroyo, as another girl softball coach. Because Ms. Arroyo is an existing employee with a financial interest in a separate matter, she needs the exemption vote by the City Council from the statutory conflict of orders to become a coach. I ask the council to approve this exemption. All the work done by Ms. Arroyo as a lead coach for the school department will be outside of her normal hours of a DBW employees. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication, something will be coming up on the new business.
Counselor Brown asks, I'm sorry, Counselor Robinson asks that we accept and file a communication under suspension, so moved. We have a communication from the city manager regarding four-forty Broadway, a notice of a project change. Dear counselors, as you recall, in January twenty-twenty-two, the city issued a request for proposals for the site, hope sparing affordable housing and alleviating the Broadway corridor. Target Companies, a reputable affordable mixed-income housing development, submitted a proposal to develop twenty-eight units of affordable housing above-ground retail space. That project comprising of ten affordable homeownership and eighteen affordable rental units was approved by the City Council. Since the selection of this proposal, the city, through its Department of Housing Community Development, has been working with Target to advance the project. During the course of these planning activities, new financing stream has become available for affordable home ownership. Recognizing the city's priorities to develop affordable, accessible homeownership opportunities, parties have agreed to modify this project and provide all of the twenty-eight units to be affordable and workforce homeownership units. There will be no rental units. The developer will utilize mass housing Commonwealth builder program to finance this change. Equally important, this modification will actually accelerate the project, allowing the construction commence one year early than would possibly be done with an affordable rental concept. Target North, Target Companies and City are finalizing land disposition agreement. This winter, Target will, companies will commence permitting process with City zoning, appeals, and planning board. Assuming the finances, financing is available as expected, construction may begin as early as fall of twenty-three. Unless the City Council is in opposition, there is no need for any further vote. Previous order from November twenty-twenty-one authorizing project allows this negotiated change. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted and filed under suspension. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. President, I ask that we move this to a second reading, but if you could just name the names and the boards.
I, per Counselor Vido's request, I will simply read the names of the appointments and the board that they will be appointed to and send this to a second reading as required. To the Chelsea's Planning Board, Mr. Eric Siznisor, nine Eden Street. To the Chelsea Scholarship Committee, to fill the remaining term of Mary Bork, J. Vellaz. For reappointment to the Economic Board, Joseph Fuchs, eleven, sorry, I'm seeing addresses. For the appointment to the Economic Board, Ms. Madeline Caulfield. For the appointment to the Economic Board, Mr. Cody J. Collins Hernandez. For reappointment to Community Recreation Advisory Board, Dr. Alice Murillo. For reappointment to the Chelsea Historical Commission, Mr. Alex Bakaral, Bakarcel. For reappointment to the Chelsea Historic Commission, Brian Montawix. And for appointment to the Youth Commission, aspiring to one-year term, Aileen Romero Sanchez. And Tese Hally. For appointment to the Tree, Chelsea Tree Board, Mr. Nicholas Boatwright. We'll be taking that matter at the next City Council meeting for adoption. We have a communication regarding the, from the city manager regarding the request of approval for a union contract with Teamsters Local Twenty-Five, TBW. Dear counselors, pursuant to four-three-dash-one of the Chelsea Council, I'm writing to, of the Chelsea Charter, rather, writing to request the City Council approve the cost items for the new collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the Teamsters Local Twenty-Five covering TBW for a period of July one, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Copy of the memorandum is attached. Memorandum of Agreement outlines the changes to the contract items. Most significant part of this negotiation of this city was the inclusion of the residency requirement and a new benefit for maternity leave, which the City Council requested in the spring. Counselor Brown asks that we waive the reading under suspension, seeing no objection. Something will be coming under new business. We have a communication for city manager regarding approval for departments for pay prior year expenses. I'm writing to request your approval for various city departments and school department to make payments for the prior year expenses from their respective twenty-three budgets. From time to time, municipalities are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. With such incidents occur, the City Council must approve the payments from the current year department budget for the prior year's obligations. Thus far, the city, as part of our fiscal year close, we have identified several outstanding year prior city year obligations in a total of six thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-one cents. School Department past year obligations is thirty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars and eighty-one cents. The invoices are itemized in the attached table. In each case, the respective department has sufficient funds to meet the outstanding obligation, no new funds are required. Only action necessary by the council is approval to make the payments. Copies of the recommendation orders are also attached. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, with some coming up on the new business.
So moved. We'll now move on to unfinished business.
Communications.
Oh, communication, sorry. We have a communication received from resident Elsa Hernandez regarding the drug crisis in the community. The letter reads, "Dear Counselor Vaughn Cooperrow and all council members," it was dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. "I'm writing today to request of the council, as a whole, address the worsening drug crisis. My neighbors and I are watching unfold in District Six daily. As drug abusers and drug paraphernalia have become commonplace in area parks, making it unsafe and nearly impossible for our children to play in an environment that is supposed to foster healthy growth. Sadly, the drug addicts traversing shirtless streets and surrounding areas are doing so intoxicated like they are in the comfort of their own home. They sit on the stairways, not on their own, and meet on the corners both day and night, visibly in a state of incoherence, injecting drugs while shouting and smoking crack. As a resident of Chelsea for twenty years plus, it is heartbreaking to see our children must endure these images and experience seeing people doing drugs right outside their homes. Needless to say, this is not what we want our children to watch. It is not a healthy environment for our kids to grow up. Furthermore, in the summer months, it is at worst. On behalf of my entire neighborhood and community, I respectfully ask the council to, for the sake of our children, address the crisis immediately before it worsens. My neighbors have proposed the city invest in the Red Impact Shop waste containers to be dispersed throughout the city, not only in District Six parks, but our recreation areas within the city of Chelsea. To reduce the amount of needles left in and around our parks and provide a safe option for city workers to clean up expeditiously. Additionally, we'd like to request a more prominent police presence here via foot patrols or officers on bikes. We have seen ourselves, drug users, leave if they see police officer cars. Our streets have been in high violence and crime for far too long because of this issue. We have grown tired of this situation. Please help us make our home a safer place for us and our children. Thank you so much for your help and consideration, Ms. Elsa Hernandez." What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. I also ask that we forward this to the chief and to the city manager.
Counselor Vido asks that this communication be forwarded to the chief of police and also to the city manager. Moving on, we have unfinished business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Avellaneda. By this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes city manager end the one-way Broadway that includes one lane of vehicular traffic, but a shared bike-bus lane between Fifth Street and Everett Pilot Program approved on January thirteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, and revert back to the original one-way Broadway two configuration. I have a motion on the floor. Let me go back.
Remove it from the table, which one you want, but...
All right, what's the, the motion on the floor?
I need my water.
Okay. Is the motion on the floor? We got an order on the floor?
No, we don't have it on the floor yet.
Just to, actually, we need a unfinished business, we need to withdraw from the table. So I actually just want to withdraw item B and not item A.
Wait.
Item B, authorized, okay.
What is the request now?
Just my, uh, get it from the clock.
I'm looking for which one we're gonna do. Okay, item B, by this vote, the Chelsea City here authorizes. Authorizes, okay. Okay, we have the item removed from the table without objection, introduced by Counselor Avellaneda, ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council here...
There is objection, there's an objection to removing the second part of this.
You want a roll call?
We can roll call.
What was the order, can you read the order?
You can't read it until you request it to come off the table.
But shouldn't we be going to the agenda items in order? Shouldn't we go to A or B, or does that not matter?
No. No, you can make a motion and take it out of order.
Okay. I didn't hear that motion. Okay.
You want to vote to remove it from the table?
Or re-phase what I said, or just repeat what I said? I'm looking to withdraw item B from the table.
You want, you want item B on the floor?
On the floor. No, that's the one I want to be read, and that's the one I want to pull from the table.
Item B.
Item B.
Okay.
And I am objecting to that.
That's the authorization for it, right.
Counselor...
No objection?
I am objecting.
You want a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we speak on it?
No, we have to roll call it first to be, have it properly before you.
And what's the, can we clarify the vote?
A yes vote would be to remove it from the table so you could take action on it, and no vote would be to leave it on the table without action.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'll repeat it. If you vote yes, you're removing it from the table as requested by Counselor Avellaneda so that you can vote on it. If you vote no, you leave it on the table and there will be no action taken. Okay? Okay, Counselor Vaughn Cooperrow, absent, Counselor Tenere Garcia.
You gotta vote.
Paul, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Once we vote, once we get into the voting, you just have to vote. So it's no...
What did she say?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counselor Boy, Abana, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
No.
No?
No.
No, okay.
I don't even...
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor Judy Garcia, absent. Okay, have a member favorite, one opposed, and two absent. The item now is properly before you.
So can you just clarify that?
Want me to read it?
Read item B, ID two-two-one-oh-seven, so that the public follows and understands what in fact is in front of this council right now.
Okay, the order before you right now reads, you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay, ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to end the one-way Broadway that includes one lane of vehicular traffic.
No, no.
That's not the one.
Item B is ID twenty-two-one-oh-seven, order introduced by Counselor Avellaneda. By this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to make permit... the one-way.
Okay, we got it. Ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to make permanent the one-way Broadway that includes one lane of vehicular traffic with a shared bike-bus lane between Fifth Street and Everett Avenue Pilot Program approved on January 13th, 2020.
What's the will of the council?
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend. What's the amendment?
Motion to amend to make permanent one-way Broadway from 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM, Monday through Saturday.
5:00 AM to 10:00 AM, when?
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday?
Yes, and if I may speak on the motion.
Just a moment, counsel.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me speak.
Thank you. I have several issues with the bus lane in itself, and so, but, that being said, there are some ways to make some, I guess, adjustments and some concessions on this topic matter. And I think most will agree that other communities have implemented bus lanes to encourage bus lane use in the downtown area when it is in fact needed the most and when it would make the most impact for those who are using it and want to have a faster ride into town and prioritize. And for that reason, I am copying what other communities have done, and I'm asking that the motion be adopted to amend this and have it downtown from 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM in the downtown area, from Monday to Saturday.
Any other speaker on the motion? Counsel Duvo.
Chairman, I, this is the second subcommittee, we had a subcommittee before this meeting, and we had one again the last time we met, a couple of weeks ago, and I still really don't understand why this ruffles so many feathers. The data continues to show that this is safer. The data that was provided to us tells us that we have 64% less accidents as a result of having the bus lane and the traveling lane. I can't understand as a mom how with so many kids are walking in that area, going to school from 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM, why we would want to prohibit the bus lane from having its own designated lane and creating further chaos, when the data continues to show us that there are less accidents happening as a result. We really cannot continue to think that we're going to keep having developments in the city and that it's not going to have adverse impact on our community. It is better for us in terms of public safety, it is better for us in terms of accommodating more modalities of traveling, whether it's the bus, public transit, pedestrians, or driving. I, I, I'm really just having a hard time justifying why we would change it. If it's not broken, why fix it? If there are things that we can do to tweak it, 1,000%, but this is like constant fighting going back and forth, and, and I really just, I'm perplexed as to why this is so serious. We are literally talking about a stretch of two blocks to accommodate a big bus that carries people to take them to work and to get to school without any impediments in the traffic. Are there things that we could do to tweak it and make it better 1,000%? We can be better about enforcement, we could be better about maybe having more, more lights or, or, I don't know, whatever, whatever the issues are, but if the, if it's safer, if it's safer and data that they keep presenting to us is telling us that it's safer, I don't understand why we're trying to fix something that's not broken. Rather than trying to perfect something, we just want to like strip it away or, or change it, it's just, it's so much chaos. We are a city with so many, so many issues right now that I think this is so petty that we're, this is even continuing to, to be a topic that we keep talking about. People are literally hungry, people are losing jobs, people, I, I just, I, I just.
30 seconds, counsel.
We should just, I'm ranting. I just, I just, I just, because I just don't get it. I think we need to say yes to environmental justice and making sure that we're accommodating the bus, say yes to safer streets, and, and make sure that we're streamlining that traffic instead of having two vehicular lanes that are just speeding down the street.
Thank you, counsel.
Ah, one more thing, men lie, women lie, but the numbers don't. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Taylor.
So I agree with Counselor Vido on the safety issue. It was one of, one of the points of information that I wanted the city to come back with from the previous subcommittee to this subcommittee was the safety issue and how many crashes, what I wanted was how many trips per crash, but they, they ended up giving me how many crashes per million vehicle miles traveled. Pre-pilot was almost 19 crashes per million, per million vehicle miles traveled. Under the bus pilot, that was reduced to 5.38 crashes per million, million vehicle miles traveled. So that's three times less. It's clear that this is a safety issue, and, you know, I gotta say that safety should always come first over other considerations, and I understand that maybe some people don't like it, although according to the survey, 56% of people who answered the survey answered in Spanish of those people, 57% either approved or strongly approved, while only 11% either disapproved or strongly disapproved. Of English respondents, 57, excuse me, 59% either approved or strongly approved, and only 27 disapproved or strongly disapproved. I think it's clear that most of the people in this city want to keep the bus lane as it is, it's a safer option, and I would agree also with the city manager when he said there's no real public policy reason to change the existing pilot program and not make it permanent. And I think the, I think the statistics bear this out, and that's why I'm going to be voting against the amendment. I encourage everyone else to vote against it.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Can I use a privilege, speak from the chair? Thank you. So again, we did have the subcommittee, there was two, I was only in, in one, which was tonight, and I made it clear that one of my thoughts and my opinion, and again, these are all individual opinions, how we believe things should be running. The city manager gave us his opinion, other folks spoke and they gave us their opinion. My opinion is that I believe that we should be promoting more public transportation, safer transportation, and also within light of what we've seen over the last year or so with the MBTA, that we're in the right direction by having this bus lane, and again, allowing our residents back and forth to get to work. As you know, we're still somewhat coming out of the pandemic, and we still have a lot of residents working from home, as was spoken earlier, in the subcommittee, but when folks start to go out and get back to work, we need to be able to have service available at a cost, reasonable cost, to make sure they're allowed to get back and forth to work, get back and forth to downtown or wherever their chores may take them. And again, the evidence that I heard tonight is there's been really no reason to resort back into what we had because of what we have in front of us seem to make sense. So again, if this measure goes forth, it's going forth, and if the amendment is failed, we have to go back to the original motion, so I just want that to be clear. So as we take heart to what we're about to do here, let us be mindful of what we think's best for our residents in the city of Chelsea. Thank you, thank you.
I'm having a, can you hear me?
What is it?
I'm just, I'm having a moment because I, there was some confusion as to what we voted on, and I, I, I just want to make sure, we're voting on the original one that says to make permanent, but we're adding the 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
The amendment, yes.
Amendment. The other one, to remove it, has been withdrawn.
Monday through Saturday.
Okay, thank you, that's, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak before we take a vote? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Okay, if you vote yes, you have approved the amendment to the original motion. If you vote no, you defeat, you'll be defeating the amendment, and then we'll vote on the original motion, okay? But if the amendment parry, carries, you don't have to vote on the original motion. A yes vote would approve the original motion as amended. Counsel Cooperal absent, Counsel of Tenebri Garcia?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Said yes.
Counsel of Aegoneta?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Vido?
No.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
Counsel Judy Garcia absent. One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed, the amendment is defeated, and now you have the roll call to adopt the original motion.
Original motion, can you read the original motion, Mr. Clerk?
Sure, sure. Original motion is ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to make permanent the one-way Broadway that includes one lane of vehicular traffic with a shared bike-bus lane between Fifth Street and Everett Avenue Pilot Program approved on January 13th, 2020. A yes will approve it, a no will be not to approve it. Any more discussion?
Any discussion on? What's your question?
So, for yes, would be to keep it the way it is?
Yes.
Yes. The floor is open, anyone like to speak on it? Counsel President?
Thank you. Since the amendment has not passed, I will be voting against, and I was hoping to have some sort of concession here, and I understand that the city manager keeps on hanging his hat on this solely based because of safety, 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 and a lot of my colleagues keep on bringing that up, safety, safety, safety. Let me just say a couple of things. Number one, for, for ever, for as long as I can remember, all I did was ask for downtown to have lights at the intersection of Fourth and Broadway and Third and Broadway, and that would have made downtown Broadway safer. But I almost dare say that it was purposely not implemented, both because of the cost or because they so much just wanted to have a one-lane downtown Broadway. It was started years ago when he tried to push two-way downtown, and he had, I was, it was almost embarrassing to have the chief of police, who had to peddle this idea, a man who I respect, pedal, because, you know, the good soldier, soldier, and they have to come up here. Chief of Police came up here and said, hey, if we have two-way downtown, you know, it'll help fight crime because a cop will be driving both ways and see crime. I mean, it was ridiculous. And then we came with this, and he said, okay, if I'm not going to get the two-way and reduce it down one-way lane, I'm going to do this, turning Chelsea into Revere. Like, that's what we want. Safety could have been easily attained with the light, intersection lights at those two spots. It wasn't the only way to do this. But no, they had to push it, and they said, well, it's for bus, increasing bus pa, you know, to push bus transportation. We saw that that wasn't happening. I like to believe that you push for policy based on data. You want data? We've had 2 million car rides from Uber in this city. Why? Because the bus system, MBTA system sucks. It doesn't help Chelsea residents. I went to a meeting last month, they're not serving Clinton Mill Hill area. This is the same system that decided to move the commuter rail line from the actual black and brown minority people it was serving, down the street to luxury apartment development? That's the one that we're supposed to be supporting? Really? You think they're serving us? The dependency of vehicles in this car has not decreased. Data, car, car registrations have not gone down. And I've heard it, contractors who are saying, it's harder for me to drive downtown now and in the area because of what has, of these changes. And these are guys who are picking up employees in this city. Parents who are saying, it's harder for me to get, drop off my kids to two different points and get to work because of what's going on downtown, not just downtown, but this road diet plan of narrowing the streets around the city.
One minute, counsel, one minute.
Actually, Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado gave me her minute, so I still have four more minutes.
I'm sorry?
Vinda, Counsel Vinda, Melinda Vega Maldonado gave me her four minutes, so I have four minutes.
Are we, are we, are we?
I asked prior to?
Okay. Time is accepted.
Thank you. So if we have all this data that contradicts what we're saying here, you know, what they're not telling you also is that while we're making all these cars not go downtown, and it's been hurting the businesses, I've heard it from businesses, there seems to be a disconnect here, a real disconnect, from this administration to the business downtown. Talk to the gold mine, he tells you traffic's backed up, get, sends me emails, lost the business. Dr. Deborah Wayne, against it. BD Store, against it. The nail salon, against it, but somehow, no one said to them, well, maybe because I'm doing a better job of walking downtown and talking to the residents and talking to the businesses and the city managers. Could that be the case? Because I'm hearing it from everyone that this is a mess. We have, our firefighters, even the, the fire, the union chief, the, I mean, the head of the union said, this is a terrible, has been a terrible idea. Police officers telling us, it's a terrible idea, it's been terrible, it's made things worse. DBW workers come up to me and tell me, it's worse. It just seems that everybody on the bottom is saying how bad this is, yet it's not reaching the top or it doesn't want to be heard from the top. I'm for the bus lane on Tobin Bridge, it's fantastic, it makes a difference, but three, but three blocks downtown for the, the mistakes, I mean, for the havoc that's wrecking downtown? Like I said, if it was purely safety, I could have said, I could have solved this five, six years ago with a couple of lights, traffic lights, downtown, but no, we're not going to do that, we'll do that a few years from now. Really? Safety wasn't worth it then? That wasn't a priority then when I asked for the lights?
One minute, counsel.
That's what I'm saying. So, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed because the data's there, you know, they could have done the safety thing, and let's not, let's not fool ourselves, you could have done the safe, improved safety downtown a long time ago with a color, a couple of intersection lights, and it would have done the same damn thing. But they want to hang this up. All right.
20 seconds.
Arm the businesses, right? I mean, make, make everyone's life a little bit worse, get everyone aggravated going down the side streets, and when you have someone, get into an accident, get hit on Chestnut and Second and Walnut. I'm going to point to this and say, hey, I told you so.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Counsel Duvo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I go too long, I just want to say that Counsel Cooperal said I can have his minutes as well.
No, he's not here.
Okay, I'm sorry, just, I thought it was hilarious, wanted to break the ice a little bit. Okay, so, I don't understand with this energy is coming from, I, and, and you know what, like, we can disagree as counselors, I get that, but I just want to bring to the table that the city manager recently forwarded an email to the rest, to the city council, that was sent to him by the president of this, of this council, where he was berating him. It was a nasty email. It is not a way that we should be talking to each other if we really want to come to a consensus, and if we really want to.
On the motion.
If we really want to represent our community and really, there was a point in this city where we had an administration that wouldn't even respond to phone calls. There was a time when we had an administration that didn't care. Since we've been on this council since 2016, and, and, you know, with full respect with the councils that were here before, but we've been a lot more active, and we have a great city administration that is responsive, that understands the needs of our community, that invests in our most vulnerable community, and so I don't understand why the vitriol needs to constantly happen in order for anything, for anything to get done. We're talking about two-block stretch to accommodate a bus, that's only going to make us better in terms of public safety, in terms of protecting our environment. I do not understand why everything has to be so contentious. And we talk about the people at the bottom don't want this. We have heard after resident after resident come here and speak in favor. I have, my husband works for DPW, I have spoken with people at DPW, they act. I have, my husband works for DPW, I have spoken with people at DPW, they actually were against it at first, as many of us were. I've spoken with police officers that think it actually works. I've spoken with people who do the school buses, and they say that it actually works. Parents feel safer that we're streamlining traffic so that there's not two lanes constantly, it's like playing double dutch to get across the street, and parents appreciate that.
One minute, Counselor.
Recupero, just kidding. I just, I just think that we really, I just really think that we really need to really just kind of get back to doing the work of the people, and, and honestly, honestly, I just want to say to my sisters on the other side that I know you all are good people in your hearts, and I know that you guys really want to do the right thing here.
Through the chair, through the chair, Counselor, please.
I just, I just have to say that, because I know your hearts, I can feel it. And, and it's a shame that we play politics the way that we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Taylor?
Four minutes. So... I think the council president had some good points about, about safety and, and about how this may be affecting the business community. I would say that no one on this council is probably more pro-business than I am. I understand the concerns of the business community, I'm part of the business community, so I get it. However, safety trumps that. I'm sorry, it does. And I think that it's clear, one, one point of safety that, that I didn't mention before, which was brought up in the subcommittee, that Chelsea was number one in crash clusters in the entire Commonwealth, and that as far as pedestrian accidents, there were six per year. That has been reduced to one per year. That is huge, okay? So, while the council president might-
Through the chair.
No, I, I'm referring to the council presidents, not, not to any, not to the, the name. This, lights, I'm all for lights. What happened before, happened before, but that is not germane to this motion. So, I wasn't there back then, so I can't really address that, but what I would say is that I agree with some of his points. I also agree that more enforcement needs to be done. We've heard this time and time again, I see counselors nodding their heads. I would ask the city manager to make sure that the police department is enforcing the double parking on Broadway. It is a constant problem, a constant irritant, and I don't know how many complaints need to be registered before we actually take action with enforcement. So, I, I would, I would say, in closing too, that I don't see a clamoring for this to change. The, the, the survey, as far as the respondents go-
One minute, Counselor.
Speaks for itself. So, you're never going to get, of course you're going to get complaints about it. You get complaints about everything. But when you have over fifty percent of the people wanting to keep the, both English and Spanish-speaking peoples wanting to keep the bus lane, and only between eleven and twenty-seven percent want to get rid of it, I think that's pretty clear, what the community wants. And isn't that what democracy is, and what this body should be reflecting, is the will of the people? So, I would say, with all due respect, that, that while, you know, some of these other concerns, you know, may be germane-
Thirty seconds, Counselor.
That, you know, I think, it's not on the table for this motion, so I will be in favor of this motion, and I encourage everyone else to vote yes on the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Would anyone else like to speak? Any other counselors like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak, before we go to a roll call? Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call? Can you just clarify the-
Yes, would be to adopt the original motion.
Sorry you have to do it, but.
Counsel Recupero absent, Counselor Tenebria Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Abadanaeda?
No.
No. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Judy Garcia absent. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, one opposed, two absent, and the motion is adopted. Now go on to new business, Mr. Chairman.
New business, Mr. President?
First order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Robinson, request that a conference be held with the Community Development Housing for an update on Mass Housing Mass Grant Program. The program offers down payment, closing costs, and other forms of mortgage assistance specifically to low and moderate income, first-time home buyers. This program must be paired with the MHP or Mass Housing First Mortgage.
What is the wish of the council?
We saw earlier, we had a communication in regards to twenty-eight affordable units coming online, and this would give us an opportunity for our residents to find out about this program and be liable to be able to purchase some of those units.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that a conference be held with the Police Chief Brian Kye, so that he can update the council on the change over about to take place and the issues facing the community in 2022 and the future.
What is the wish of the council?
I'd like to amend that and talk about all issues that we have, and adopt that unanimously under suspension. There are no objections?
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, request that the Traffic and Parking Commission provide the city council with, what areas they are contemplating on installing speed bumps.
Adopt this unanimously under suspension, and just briefly, Warren Avenue was just done, and it was supposed to be done in October, and the residents were not notified that it was going to take place earlier. So I just want to get a handle on where they're going to be doing it and how they're going to notify residents. Thank you.
Order introduced by Counsel Abadanaeda. Whereas the Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the city of Chelsea, now therefore be it ordained that the revised court of ordinances of the city of Chelsea is amended be further amended as follows. The Chapter fourteen, Article one, license permits and Massachusetts business regulations in general be amended by adding section eight as follows. Section fourteen dash eight, proximity of ice cream trucks to school. No ice cream vendor permitted under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two seventy-six and twenty-five, shall engage in ice cream truck vending within five hundred feet of Republic or private school providing education in kindergarten of any grades one through twelve.
Make motion to move that to a second reading, Mr. President?
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty B, for Ms. Bianca Mercado's position as a member of the Chelsea Tree Board.
Ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Clerk asks for, sorry, Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call vote, clerk call roll.
Yes, to approve. Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenebria Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado? Counsel Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
She's not here?
Nope. Absent, and Counsel Judy Garcia absent. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, none opposed, three absent, motion is adopted. Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant, pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty B, for the part-time athletic coach position in the school department to be held by Ms. Emily Arroyo, effective retroactive to September sixth, 2022.
Ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Counsel Robinson asks for a roll call?
Yes, to adopt. Counsel Recupero absent, Counsel Tenebria Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Abadanaeda?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus, absent. Okay, so you have nine, eight. Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. Motion adopted. Next order introduced by Counsel Brown, order that the city council approves an increase in the fiscal year 2023, school department revision appropriation from one hundred and eighteen million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars to one hundred and eighteen million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, by net increase of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, in tribute to the final fiscal year 2023 cherry sheet calculations.
What is the wish of the council?
Ask that it move, be moved to a second reading for its money item. It's just a cherry sheet, it's a return from my investment from the governor's office, but we need a second reading on it?
Second reading, yep.
Mr. Clerk, if it's possible, it's nine more orders, they're all financial orders, they're orders we addressed, if it's okay?
Want me to read them off, though?
Just, if you could just read them off?
Read them off, yeah. Next order run financial by Counsel Brown, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars from the general stabilization account fund to the FY twenty-three DPW Sewer Department Stormwater Management Account, to provide funding for illicit discharge detection and elimination work in Mill Creek. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from the general stabilization account fund seventy-twenty to the FY twenty-three Housing and Community Development Contract Services Account, to provide funding for environmental oversight work on the inner development. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the general stabilization account fund seventy-twenty to the FY twenty-three Recreation and Cultural Affairs Division Youth Programs Account, to provide funding for a grant program for youth athletic leagues. Order that pursuant to Section four dash three, one of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth and collective bargaining agreement negotiated with Teamsters Local twenty-five for the DPW memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, dated September one, 2022. Order that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the Teamsters Local twenty-five for the DPW for fiscal year 2023, the Chelsea City Council authorizes the transfer of one hundred and twenty thousand from the salary reserve account to the FY twenty-two three DPW Streets and Sidewalk Regular Salaries Account. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-one were not paid and are owed to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current year FY twenty-three budget that council authorizes the expenditure of one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents from the Human Resources Department reimbursement expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid Medicare reimbursement to two retirees from a prior year. The department has sufficient funds to meet all outstanding obligations. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-two were not paid and are owed, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current year FY twenty-three budget that council authorized the expenditure of three thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents from the Human Resources Department health reimbursement expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid Medicare reimbursement to five retirees from a prior year. Department has sufficient funds.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Clerk, can I make a motion that those, that you've read, will be moved to a second reading? I know we have a few more coming up, but I just wanted to stand up and not get the council members lost in what's going on here, because we've all looked at these before, and if we have any questions, we should, because we're going to have a second reading at our next meeting, please let us, let me know, and I'll call the subcommittee if you need clarifications on it. Thank you.
Order that in accord, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-two were not paid and are owed, and to meet the obligation, funds are required from the year FY twenty-three budget that council authorizes the expenditure of five hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents from the Department of Public Work Structures and Grounds expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid plumbing expense to Boston Mechanical Services from the prior year. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedure whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-two were not paid and are owed, to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY twenty-three budget that council authorized the expenditure of one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents from the Health and Human Services Veterans Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid funeral home burial expense to Casper Funeral Home from the prior year. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedure whereby costs incurred in FY twenty-two were not paid and are owed to the vendor, and to meet the obligation, funds are required from the current year twen, uh, fiscal year twenty-three budget that council authorized the expenditure of thirty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars and eighty-one cents from the school department expenditure lines to satisfy the unpaid balance from the prior year. Each of the departments has sufficient funds to meet all these outstanding obligations, therefore, no funds are required. Those of all your financial orders go into a second reading.
On the last four, Ms. Clerk, I'd also like to move to second reading, we will be happy, we will be taking these up at our second, our next meeting, and again, if any council member have any questions, clarifications, if you want, we can have a subcommittee before our next meeting, and we can clarify any of the documents or any of the appropriations that we've already discussed for our city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The last order before you introduce by Counsel Robinson, it's an ordinance. Therefore be it ordained that the revised court of ordinances of the city of Chelsea be amended and further amended as adopted, and it follows.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Move to a second reading, if there are no objections, under suspension.
We send that to a subcommittee, not that I'm against it, but I would like to talk about it a little bit more in depth.
You want to move it to a conference?
Yeah.
So, Counsel Vido asked that it be moved to a subcommittee? Conference, to meet with the city solicitor and the city manager in regards to what these ordinance changes for, changes to the public event process may be. That's all we have on the agenda for today, if there's any announcements. Counsel Vido?
I had an opportunity to go to the library last Friday for the Teen Takeover event that was hosted by the Chelsea Black community and other folks. It was really cool. I have never been to a library that was so lit, they had DJs, a photo booth, they had boba tea, they had gaming room. It was really an amazing event, so I just want to shout out our community members, especially the library, they always, they do an amazing job over there, and the Chelsea Black community, as usual. I also, while I was there, bumped into an organization that has recently, they've been open since January for, for years. I, I remember when, before you got, Counsel Taylor got in the city council, Recupero, all of us have advocated for a youth center here in the city, and they actually started one, while it's not what we hope to be, we know that the city manager's in the works of trying to make that happen for us. There is a space where young people could go to, it's on two sixty-nine Broadway, is being funded by the, by North Suffolk Mental Health and other sources. If anybody has, wants to know more information about them, I highly suggest that our coun, any counselors, take a tour down there. I have something scheduled for Wednesday to go take a look and see how it is, but it's specifically for sixteen-to-twenty-one-year-olds, which tends to be that age where there really aren't pro, programs for them, so, you know, we're moving in the right direction, it takes a village, and so I just wanted to make sure that, I'm shouting out the people that are doing the work right now, and those that are already starting to get the ball rolling on these spaces for our young people. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Yes, just a reminder, because of the way that our calendar is working, we do have a back-to-back, rare back-to-back meeting, and we will be meeting next Monday. That concludes this night's meeting, thank you very much, everyone. That concludes this night's meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.